Morning, everyone. Sorry I'm a minute late. I'd like to
Morning.
... everybody to the May 26th, Thursday, meeting of the Supplemental Retirement Board Trustees. If you'll stand and join us, I pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to
To the flag.
The Republic for which it stands, one nation.
I love that you'll lead us in our salute to the North Carolina flag.
Salute the flag of North Carolina and pledge to the old North State love, loyalty, and faith.
Welcome those that are joining us by phone and persons that will be adjourning our meeting in memory and prayers for the victims, families, and communities and the whole country that's been affected by the activities in Texas this week. And from personal experience, nothing's going to be, ever going to be the same for those folks, ever. So we will be adjourning our meeting in honor of them. I'll call the meeting to order and welcome everybody to the board meeting. It will be a public comment period for organizations and individuals to address more later in meetings. Our, in the effort to continue the initiative to increase our transparency, we've established a protocol for all audio and video of official public meetings. As a result, this one is recorded on this edition. Calls of some board members are attending by phone or remotely. We will call the roll. When you leave the meeting at any point, please announce your departure, as well as when you come back to the meeting, be aware that any text or other recorded information between any board members during the meeting time on personal cell phones or any other devices are deemed and considered to be public record. With that, I'll ask the secretary to call the roll. Treasurer Falwell? Here. Chavella Thomas?
Present.
Lorraine Johnson?
Present.
James Lumpston?
Heavens.
Belinda Barron?
Present.
Michael Lewis? Nels Roslin?
Here.
Steve Bean?
Here.
Wynden Hibbler?
Present.
We have quite a core today. Thank you all for joining us. I want to give Nels an opportunity, some of you have seen the news regarding Nels, so I just want to give him an opportunity to announce that to our board.
Well, thank you Treasurer Falwell. Mr. Chairman, starting May 1st, Governor Cooper has nominated me to be the next state comptroller effective July 1st. It is subject to House and Senate confirmation. I have to work through 150 job interviews, but I'm excited at the opportunity and would be very excited also, well, that office and that position works very closely with the state treasurer's office and it's, I'm very humbled and excited and thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. At some point, you'll, Nels will be leaving our board and so definitely this, the integrity and ability, passion is brought to our board. And I'll start with a correction, just so you get enough votes. It's 170 job interviews, not 110.
I'm seeing.
So if you leave around 20 people out, I hear you. You'll be on this board a long time. So anyway, we look forward to that and thank you. Our Ethics Act members, you've seen our agenda. Does any member have a conflict or a potential conflict of interest regarding matters there before us? Okay. Without objection, as we go through our voting today, without objection, anyone who makes a motion or is second to a motion will be considered them a yes vote for efficiency purposes. So our first vote is the approval of the meeting minutes of February 24th. But your motion.
Somo. Tomma.
Belinda made the motion. Chavella Thomas makes the second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Do we combine these two? Read what you think. Can I combine those two? Is there any objection to combining these votes approving the meeting minutes from February 24th and February 14th? The committee, and
No objection.
Would that motion still stand?
That motion, yes.
Chavella, is your second still stand to approve a vote at once?
Yes.
Okay. Motion being made and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, the motion front of the table is the approval of the meeting minutes of February 14th of the audit subcommittee, as well as the meeting minutes of the board meeting of February 24th. And the court will call the roll. Treasurer Falwell? Aye. Lorraine Johnson?
Aye.
James Lumpston?
Aye.
Nels Roslin?
Aye.
Steve Bean?
Aye.
Wynden Hibbler?
Aye.
Good. With that, we'll now go to item number five. We're also joined today by Ted Brand and he's the Chief of Staff of the Treasurer's Office, as well as Brandon, Chief Financial Officer of the Treasurer's Office, and Zora, who's doing all kinds of great things, communications with our supplemental and plan, as well as April. So, thank you. Well, thank you Treasurer. First off, I wanted to give the board an update on the audit that we are, are in the process of, we have finalized the employer testing. We had seven, seven findings this year. There are low-risk findings as compared to 11 findings last year, so down a little bit from last year. The main, the main themes around those findings are missed deferral changes. We had, we had a couple of instances where an employer should have been, should have been deferring on 26 payrolls, but we're only doing so on 24. And then some around some uses of the improper compensation. Once the audit is finalized, we will be working with each employer to ensure that the findings are mediated. Our compliance officer will be sending out and reaching out to those folks at the end of that. We've also been working with our partners in the Financial Operations Division on the financial statements. That, that is in process and should be, should be wrapping up soon. And then once all that is finalized, we will have our next audit subcommittee meeting, July the 19th, where CLA will present the audit results. Let me pause there and see if there's any questions or comments. This is the treasurer. So for the general public who's listening to this, these findings, how many of them are things that we had complete control of? We here at the office, none. None. Okay. All right, so the findings are on the employer part, but the audit is on us. So the, it's, it's just wanted to make sure we get the Yes. Accountability and responsibility, blame going in the right direction. Go ahead. Any other questions or? So what, so the findings, can you resay something? I was just asking if there's any, any questions or comments from any of the board members or any of the? The findings are on the plan, but the findings are generally things that were happening externally, of people that we interact with. That's correct. The findings are the result of, of one of the 1,100 employers not taking action where they should. Okay. Brandon, did you have a question or comment?
It's okay. Frank Lawrence, this has, the employer testing we get done is in addition to the financial report audit. So the financial statement audit is a separate piece, so this isn't part of, this would be findings in the financial statement audit. This is truly separate with the employer reporting.
Yeah, thank you for that clarification.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Go ahead. All right. The next item to present, you will have in your materials is the SRP budget proposal for the 22, 23 year. You'll see on page three of the memo, we have, we have our revenue projections based on the current balances for each of the plans. We have the estimated fee collections for the 22, 23 year at our new rate of 1.25 basis points, as well as our expected expenditures for the year. And you can see that we still project at the end of the 22, 23 fiscal year, we will still have a substantial balance in our administrative fee accounts, even after reducing the fees. Overall, page four, it's, sorry, it was, it was labeled page five, on page four, you can see the detail of the budget. You can see on the staffing, staffing expenditure section, that amount is down, is down slightly, mainly due to, there were a couple of staff positions that were allocated to the support of the plans in the previous fiscal year that will not be there in the, in this next fiscal year, as well as there's a decrease in the cost of the current, current staff. This does include the 2.5% increase that the General Assembly granted for the coming, coming of fiscal year. You'll also see that we have a slight uptick in our legal expenses. We do have a placeholder item, $100,000, in case the board decides we need to do a record-keeping procurement, RFP. And you'll see there's a slight uptick in the intergovernmental transfer area as well. Overall, it's just a slight reduction in the budget of about $1,700 from the previous fiscal year to the next, next fiscal year. Any questions or comments? We have the vote, with the vote to accept?
The motion to accept the budget recommendation.
Nels?
Second.
Second. Belinda?
Steve Bean, second. Thank you. We have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? If not, the court will call the roll. Treasurer Falwell? Aye. Chavella Thomas?
Aye.
Lorraine Johnson?
Aye.
James Lumpston?
Aye.
Belinda Barron?
Aye.
And Wynden Hibbler?
Aye.
Right, thank you. The next item, I wanted to provide an update on the 403B program and our efforts so far. You know, before, we talked about a lot of the communication that we've done with our, our employers to wind down the program. Our first major milestone, which is the employer election form deadline, is coming up at the end of May. To date, we have received 89 of the 96 employer forms, which represents about 92% of the employers. There's been a little bit of delay in some, and it's, you know, been kind of an interesting process as we've gone through this. We've had a number of employers who initially thought that they would elect to terminate their plan, but then after arriving at that decision, learned that they had other programs out there. So it's been kind of an interesting, you know, few months, that some of these employers really did not even know what they had in terms of an offering. But our team here, as well as the team at Empower, have done a lot of work in reaching out, and Matt will speak a little bit later to some of the outreach efforts. Of those that we've gotten forms back on, 65 of those employers have elected to de-convert, meaning that they will move their assets to another one of the providers that they offer. And 24 of the employers today have elected to terminate their plans. So of those employers that, that will terminate, it will provide an opportunity for those participants to do something with their monies. We have made some changes to the standard, standard distribution form, to add a rollover to the NC 401K and NC 457 plan as an option. So, you know, trying to make it easy, trying to, you know, make sure everyone that's in that situation realizes that they have an option to roll those monies over into the other plans. As I mentioned before, the, the Empower team has done a great job in terms of outreach. Matt will speak to that a little bit more. As we focus on, you're collecting the decisions on the, on the remaining seven employers, we've already started to shift our focus over to participating, to, to participate in communications, and I'll let Matt discuss those efforts as well. The good news is, you know, for those that, you know, that remain, we'll certainly be making more outreach calls to them to ensure that we get their forms by the deadline. Matt, his team will continue to reach out, and if we do have anyone that for any reason fails to turn in a form, we are looking at a legislative option that would allow us to force the money out of the program. The next Technical corrections, Bill. It's, we'll be going into the short session. And then the next major project milestone is September the 30th, which we're targeting to have all of the assets moved out of the program by that day. Let me pause there and see if there's any questions, comments regarding the update to the 403B, beyond what Matt will speak to in a few moments. Just want to applaud the courage of the board and the work of the staff to get us into the eighth or ninth inning of this. As you've heard me say in the past, this is a project we could never be great at, and you know, we need to be putting 100% of our attention toward the two things we can be, we can be great at, which is the 401 and the 457. And appreciate all the external folks who have helped us along this process. I know there will be a hiccup somewhere along the line, one or two employers, but we're doing what's right and we'll see it through to the end. So thank you for, for all your hard work, and I'm sure along the way of this process, you've learned, probably learned some other things about employers, that you probably weren't apparent, you know, that may help us be even greater at the 401 and the 457. So thank you very much. The next item up, as we wind down, wind down the program, we've taken a look at our administrative fee account for the, for the NC 403B program versus the, the expenses that we expect to have through the remainder of the year. You have a memo that was sent out to show, we currently have a ballot projected at June, June the 30th of about $45,000. We expect through the remainder of the year to have legal expenses of around $30,000, which would leave us with a surplus of almost $15,000, which if there is any surplus, our plan is to transfer those amounts to the 401K and the 457 for, to compensate those plans for the additional time that staff has spent on the 403B plan this year. But as a result, we're trying to avoid building up any further surplus, and so staff and, staff is recommending that we suspend our five basis point fee for the remainder of the year for which the program will exist, again, to avoid any further buildup of surplus. So that's the, that's a recommendation by staff, and we would need to vote, the board would need to vote to approve, approve that suspension. Okay. Do I hear a motion to accept staff's recommendation to approve the suspension?
Somo. Lumpston.
Thank you.
Second. Bean.
Thank you, James, and thank you, Stephen. Any further discussion?
Hearing none, the court will call the roll. Treasurer Falwell? Aye. Chavella Thomas?
Aye.
Lorraine Johnson?
Aye.
Belinda Barron?
Aye.
Michael Lewis?
Aye.
Nels Roslin?
Aye.
Wynden Hibbler?
Aye.
Lorraine Johnson?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you very much. Now we're on number six, legal matters.
First, first is the, is an amendment to the 403B plan document. What are the benefits that we've offered, or the board has offered? As part of the program, it's been an IRS-approved document for those employers who want to take advantage of that, use our plan document. That's probably been limited to those who use our plan exclusively, or possibly just for, for new hires. Employers that have multiple investment options, investment providers, probably use a pre-existing plan from a plan document from a investment provider or third-party administrator. But as part of closing down the program, we need to make some final amendments to the, to the plan, hand off, the plan document, hand off the plan document to employers, because if they're going to continue the plan, then they're going to need to have this plan document, this final amendment, and then they will go on and manage the plan document from here. If they're terminating, they need to have a final amendment to terminate the, to terminate the plan. And you have the amendments in your materials, we've also included them in a, in a resolution, and hopefully it'll make it easier for employers using the plan document to adopt. The amendments include an option to terminate the plan effective July 1, and if an employer is terminated, using a plan document, terminating the plan would have to elect that. The removal of references to prudential entities is the investment provider, and a default distribution for terminated plans. Specifically, you're a terminated plan and you don't do any, and you're a participant, you don't do anything with your money, you have a balance of $1,000 or less, that would be a cash distribution that would automatically be sent out. If you're above $1,000, there'll be a rollover to an Empower IRA. Once again, this is just for those participants who don't do anything. They'll have at least 60 days' notice to do something. Your plan's terminating, you have an option, what do you, where do you want to send your money? But we need something for those who don't, who just don't act. The amendments also add the CARES Act provisions to the plan document, these are the ones the board adopted two years ago, increase the, consistent with the Secure Act, increase the, the age from 75 to 72 for required minimum distributions, and amend an Internal Revenue Code reference for hardship distributions. Once again, you have the, a copy of the resolution, the amendment that's within the resolution in your materials. Staff recommends adoption, but if there are any questions, glad to address those. Any questions?
Yes, this
Yes, sir. Go ahead. My last question.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Can you explain why $1,000, just to, so we can make sure, why is $1,000 just the, I guess, the point of, of intonation?
That is the, I believe that's in the, that's in the, I believe that's in the code. That's typically what's, we, that's the, I know it's a standard, but I think it's tip, it's in the code as well.
Yeah, the IRS force-out limit of
$1,000.
Is $1,000.
In the IRS code. Internal Revenue Code.
Yeah. Great question. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, you said it's IRA, IRA standard, IRS standard?
Internal Revenue Service. Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Great question. All right. And this requires a vote. Do I hear a motion to approve staff's recommendation on this subject?
Chavella Thomas, somo.
Thank you. Second.
Belinda Barron, second.
Thank you very much. Any further discussion? And can I combine these two?
The, that, the loan policy? Oh, we would need separate ones.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, the court will call the roll. Treasurer Falwell? Aye. Lorraine Johnson?
Aye.
James Lumpston?
Aye.
Nels Roslin?
Aye.
Steve Bean?
Aye.
Wynden Hibbler?
Aye.
Lorraine Johnson?
Aye.
Next, you have two proposed changes to the loan policy in your materials, both deal with rollovers of loans. And as background, the current policy prohibits loan rollovers in or out between supplemental retirement plans and other retirement plans. However, the policy's not explicit on internal rollovers, if you will, between two plans, say the 403B program and the 401K plan. The first change would permit a rollover of a loan internally, from, so from one NC supplemental retirement plan to another, as part of an account rollover, not just the loan, but if you're moving your entire account over, you have a loan, this change would allow the loan to go with it. You wouldn't have to pay off the loan or take a, take a distribution for moving your funds. The second change would permit a rollover into the supplemental retirement plan from an outside plan, but in this, given the operational administrative issues, talking with Empower, there are two conditions on that. One, it's a, it would be at a plan level, not at individual level, so, so all the, all the accounts from a plan are moving over, and if Empower gets sufficient cooperation from the third-party administrator and the employer of this, of this plan that's presumably shutting down and moving the accounts over, then we would permit the, the rollover of the loans with the accounts. This, as I mentioned before, this will, this is, this will help participants because they will, currently, now they have to either pay off their loan or take a distribution before, before. Staff recommends the two changes that you have in your materials, but I'll answer any questions.
Any questions? Hearing none, entertain a motion to accept the staff's recommendation.
Belinda Barron, somo.
Second. Bean, second.
Thank you, Stephen. Not all at once there. So any further discussion? Hearing none, the court will call the roll. Treasurer Falwell? Aye. Chavella Thomas?
Aye.
Lorraine Johnson?
Aye.
James Lumpston?
Aye.
Nels Roslin?
Aye.
Wynden Hibbler?
Aye.
Thank you very much. I'm rolling right along. We're now at, to item number seven, and we'll call Michael and Matt up our, up here at this. Giving the remarks, I just want to say
Giving the remarks, I just want to say, uh, that there's a lot of people that reach out to me in this office, and I just want to admonish you. In all of your material, all of your publication, all of your communication, that anything that you can do to separate people's minds, the declines that they've experienced in the 401 to 457 plan versus this merger, that you take extra, extra steps to do that. You know, because we are, I get emails, phone calls, get blamed for, we made a decision to go with Empower, uh, and that's resulted in me losing all this money. And is that clear as butt? What I'm trying to?
No, yeah, absolutely. We could definitely reinforce that. We're doing the sale, absolutely nothing to change with the investments at all. Just reinforce that.
Can't convince people of that who lost their, lost a lot of money for having to consider going back to work. They create a lifestyle based on that level of assets and just need to, it was a bad influence of events there.
The market volatility at the time of the sale.
Absolutely. That's all I want to say.
Yeah, thanks for sharing that. And, uh, you know, it's great to be here today. We are officially empowered today, so, um, should have a swear jar here if Matt and I accidentally do say prudential during our update today. So I'm going to start, um, the meeting today by handing it over to Matt. Really want to focus on all of the work collectively we've been doing around the 403B, and then I'll give a, give a quick summary update after that. So Matt, the floor is yours.
Good morning, Treasure Falwell, members of the board. I'll put you through today. I have a lot to share this morning. It's been a busy first quarter, a lot of things taking place. Uh, I'll cover some of the engagements over the last quarter, actions of employers and employees, we've got some special initiatives I'll share updates on. Uh, but I think to start, I'll jump in right where Jeff and Ree left off of 403B. One of the biggest, if not the biggest initiative we have going on right now. Jeff shared the breakdown of forms that we've received. We've been really good progress. Just to read out, um, the book of plans that we have within this program, we have 96 employers who offer 403B. And when you look at the disposition of accounts, there are 1,500 total participant accounts in those 96 employers. Eighty-five percent of them reside within the top 15 plans. As you start to go down the list, we actually have 20 employers that have no participant accounts in them, but all of those employers need to take action, as Jeff shared earlier, by the end of this month. Really pleased with the progress. It's taken a little longer than we thought, but we're really close. We have seven employers left, and I was looking at my phone before I came up here. You know, I'm sure there's probably a couple more that maybe have come in since we started the meeting, but we will continue to follow up with them. They essentially have a big decision to make by the end of this month. Are they keeping their 403B program or are they going to terminate? This portion of the program is going away, obviously, but that's a key decision because that impacts the choices that employees will have to make. And I'll share some updates on what we're doing with this as well. Just to give you some perspective on what's happened since our last meeting, not only have we spoken with all 96 employers, we've had over 300 meetings with those employers, calls, meetings to assist them with questions they have, to walk through the form, um, to walk through some of the next steps with employees. So a lot of activity. As Jeff mentioned, it's taken a little longer, and Treasure, you mentioned, we've probably learned a lot. We've definitely learned a lot. Uh, I'll give you some, some of the kind of key terms and themes that I've heard from those discussions. A lot of those employers are just unsure what they've had, uh, because it's been 10, 20, 30 years, they've accumulated more than one 403B option in their plan. We've been on calls where they realize that in the midst of the call that they have five, six, seven, if not more vendors. So what that requires on them is to really do their due diligence. They're doing their homework, they're working with their TDA, they're calling other vendors because they want to make sure they know what they have before they make that final choice. That's taken them some time. Employers that want to keep their 403B plan, they have a big decision to make too, not just that choice, but who their default vendor is. Because when it gets to 930, if those employees haven't made a decision, those assets will have to move to that default vendor that they chose. As you can imagine, that creates a lot of internal discussions within those employers, different perspectives that they've got to navigate to come to consensus, uh, and we're helping them, you know, navigate those discussions where we can. We've had some employers that have actually said, we don't like our current 403B options. Um, now that the NC portion is going away that we really like, we're actually going to add a new option. So some of them are actually engaging new providers to add to become that default. And that's for a host of reasons, something about like the annuity-based options they have, and they want more of a mutual fund approach. So we're seeing a lot of those different types of things. And, you know, one of the things we've seen, not just with this project over the last year or two, is turnover, which is impacting these employers in a lot of ways. Not only are they dealing with turnover with their associates and trying to hire more people, but sometimes that turnover hits the decision makers, folks in HR, folks in finance. And we've had situations where we've talked to the employer about this particular effort, and then that person changed. They have an inner person that came out, re-educating them. So they're navigating a lot of things on their end, and then they have a lot of other things as well. So, uh, in light of all those things, and in spite of all those things, I think we've seen really good traction, really good progress. But we have other things to do, and our work continues, not just with the seven, but with employees. And so the next phase of this effort is engaging those employees, and it really overlaps the first phase. We've already started that. To give you an example, one of the largest employers we have, they filled their form out pretty early back in March, and they immediately reached out to their counselor and said, we want to start educating people now. We don't want to wait until June, July, August. That particular employer hosted 12 webinars with us. We impacted over 150 people in those webinars, and that same employer, we've done over 100 one-on-ones with those impacted 403B participants, and we continue to do that work now. So just an example of the type of work we're going to have to keep doing with those employers to make sure employees have the information they need.
I was going to interrupt, I'm, because I'm reading this at P and I. Are you seeing other, um, folks discontinuing their 403B programs?
Outside of the North Carolina program? I haven't heard of anything.
Nothing, nothing that we've seen yet, no.
But I, but I will say, within this particular program, there are a lot of employers that have chosen option to keep their plan, but they're actually making longer-term plans to unwind those other vendors and go exclusive with this program. So, um, they may not have the, um, the ability to do that now, right? Some of these players have 1,000, 1,500, even 2,000 people outside of this program, and they just don't want to create that kind of disruption. But we have seen a lot of interested people, if they're not terminating, streamlining, so maybe cutting down from five to six options down to two or three, and longer term, totally eliminating. But I, I don't have any information on outside.
It'd be hard for you to digest more than one of us doing this at a time, right? I mean, you wouldn't want to have 12 of us doing, 12 states doing this at the same time.
At the exact same time. Yeah, it's, it's been a monumental effort. Worked to get to this point, absolutely.
Now you got the recipes.
Yeah. All right.
I will thank.
Thank you for the question, and I will also add, in the course of these discussions, it comes through loud and clear, the trust that these employers place in this program, in this board, and we see that coming through in the choices they're making and some of the things they're talking about. While they may not terminate now, just the fact that they're considering it, I think it says a lot about the trust they place in this program. And we've also had employers that we've worked with that don't currently offer the NC 457, that because of this effort have decided, you know what, let's add that plan. We actually just got paperwork last week from one of the school systems that added the program. So in addition to this very focused effort on 403B, it's created some interesting opportunities to get more plans added and to even just open up the avenues for more education to help people. So, uh, and, you know, we're in that phase now. Employees need help. We've had other employers, uh, who have chosen to sit down and have those education discussions themselves as the plan sponsor. They're sitting down one-on-one with employees, letting them know the decision they made, letting them know who the default is, and asking them to make a choice well in advance of the deadlines. They want to make sure folks get that, uh, that information in us as soon as possible. So a lot of work still to do. Communication campaigns, we're actually going to be hosting two webinars in June for all 403B participants. We'll be doing a lot at the local level as well, and that'll vary by employer and based on the decision and just the things they have going on. Any questions on 403B before I jump into some of the other things? Well, I do want to say thank you again to Tom and Jeff and Helen and Ree, Kristi Zora for their partnership, which is a tremendous amount of work to see in place that's still going on as we speak. We think about communications and web updates and information, Q and As that have been made available. Just a tremendous effort and partnership.
I have a question. This is Melinda. Have you been getting phone calls or had conversations directly with the participants? And are the participants asking the question, what's the best thing for me to do according to what y'all think?
Yeah, I would say, I mean, it's still early in the participant discussions, but I think that's probably a question we get even outside of this project. Folks want assistance, they want help. They may, they may want more than the education we can provide. So that, that's a pretty common question. We don't know what their choices are, but ultimately they have to make that choice. I will say definitely one of the trends we see is if an employee is in an employer that is choosing to terminate, their options, uh, increase, meaning they've hit a distributable bet if all 403Bs go away, and they can actually roll over to the 401K and the 457. I, I think when we see those types of situations, a very high interest in wanting to move over to the other parts of the supplemental program. So that question.
Do you have any indication? Best possible guess at this point, how many of our 1,500 403B participants will be staying with us in our 401K or 457 plan?
That's a great question. It's too early for me to have that data. I will say we have, I think about, we're at about 15% of the current 1,500 participants are in a separated service status that retired. When we talk to those individuals, anecdotally, I'll share, they're very interested in rolling over. So if I had to guess, I think we'll see a high number of folks that are, that have that option, moving over to the 401K or the 457 if their situation allows it. As far as formal data, I do not have that.
Okay.
But we can bring that at the next meeting.
Yeah, sure. The August meeting, probably have a better line of sight to what that percentage is.
Okay. Thank you.
Great question.
All right, I'm going to jump in the few minutes I have over to slide 44 in the materials. You can see a breakdown of our Q1 engagements for the quarter. Uh, and you can see the numbers by month and then a roll-up of the first quarter. One thing I think you take away from this, especially if you have the Q1 2021 slide next to it, is Q1 this year was a tremendous quarter for engagements. On every single metric, we are higher than we were in Q1 of 2021. Group meetings, we had 430 now in the first quarter. That's 25% higher over here. Group meeting attendees, just shy of 10,000 people participating in those group meetings. That's 20% higher. Uh, I'll point out there, one of the things, the strategies that has been very helpful over the last two years is doing larger virtual education engagements. We had 19 large, what we call statewide education sessions that we open up to all employers, and they promote it. Folks will register. Thirty-five percent of those group meeting attendees came from those 19 events, which is something we want to continue. We're finding different ways to get that information out there to help people. Individual meetings, next row down, a really good quarter. When you look at the trend line from 2021, we were averaging just slightly above 1,900 one-on-ones a month. Q1, uh, that number increased to almost 2,300. So even in, in, you know, two to three years into this pandemic and virtual, we're still seeing one-on-one consultations increasing slightly month over month. It was a really positive thing. We use those group meetings to engage, and then we want to make sure people get the personalized support they need, so we try to take action instead of an appointment with a counselor. So 6,800 for the quarter, that's 16% higher. Employer meetings, uh, we talked about 403B, we had 966 employer meetings in the first quarter. Some of those were 403B discussions, but we talk about a lot of other things. Adding the 457 plan, thinking about adding an employer contribution. How do we engage employees and help them provide education? With a thousand, uh, sub-employers across state, cities, counties, municipalities, um, conservatively, I'd say we have 3,000 contacts we're probably managing relationships with. That leads to a lot of discussions and a lot of meetings, and for the first quarter, we were 12% higher over here. Total onsite visits, I did want to point out, for a couple of years, that row had a bunch of zeros, and you'll see there are some numbers there now. That's an indicator we're getting back out in the field. Uh, it's been a slow start. We're, we've been very measured on how we go back out, but we know people need us out there. And when you see the April, May numbers, you'll see they're even higher than once in the first quarter. We're going to larger events, larger education meetings, some conferences, uh, employers that have adopted plans or employing or contributions will go for a roll-out onsite with that employer. We've had some employer meetings face-to-face. So we're going to continue that. We've kind of been a soft launch, but one of the things we're trying to learn is what's the balance of being onsite and virtual. Virtual has helped us a lot. We've really figured, uh, some things out, I think, over the last couple of years, but as we get back out in the field, we also want to continue virtual. So we'll be marrying these two worlds together and doing some hybrid work. Too early to tell what that balance will be, but essentially we want to go where folks need us, and so we're starting to go back out there. We also have an individual that will be in this office again when we're ready and when our staff's ready, so we're preparing for that as well when the time is right. So hopefully the trajectory we've seen over the last few months with the pandemic continues, because it's been nice to get out and just see people face-to-face. I'll share a couple of key initiatives from the last quarter. Last year, we started doing more with employers and education. We continued that work this year. We do a quarterly education session for employees called the Employer Quarter. The one for Q1 was in January. We had 232 employers register for that event. So it's been interesting to see quarter by quarter, we're still getting very high numbers. The content changes, the agenda changes every meeting. We have guests come in to address these employers and share updates. A lot of interest there, so we're continuing that. We started a new webinar series this year based on some discussions with Tom, Jeff, and staff. It's a monthly session where we actually educate new employer contacts, folks that may be new to their payroll role, their new administrators, basics of the role, things that they need to be thinking about, how to access the website. We thought when we started that this year, we'd get 10, 20 people. Last month's session, we had 140 people registered. So we're seeing a lot of interest. I think we've struck on something that's a really key need, so we're continuing to find ways to help employers. I talked about large events. We're actually doing some large events this month as well. So next meeting, I'll share some of the numbers. We've got 12 statewide events this month with over 4,000 people registering. So we're trying to continue to find ways to engage, to help people, to get information out there that they need. And finally, and I've heard this several times, retirees are an important population. They need us just as much as people that are starting out and at the midpoint of their career. So we continue to pursue people. Since we started doing those outreach calls in the middle of 2020, we've made over 6,000 calls to retirees in the first quarter. We had almost 1,000 of those calls. And if we continue to call and reach out to help people, they place it, they want that assistance, they're appreciative of the help, and it's important that they know that we're here for them as well. One of the managers of my team, Jody Mussowhite, shared a story with me a couple of weeks ago, where she was looking at her list of retirees within her territory and saw a name that she hadn't seen in a while. It was an individual that she helped enroll years ago, has worked with on and off, but it had been a while. So she called this individual just to check in if they were entering retirement, um, and came to found out they're dealing with a few things. They had just lost a spouse, they're entering retirement, they're actually about to have their first grandchild. So it was, uh, I think it was really important, not just to be called, but be connected and reminded this individual it had been a while, that we're here for you. You can call us whenever you can throughout retirement. Shared some information, they had some questions. And I share that because I think in addition to having 18 people and not only having a tremendous amount of experience in this industry, we have over 400 years of industry experience. This team of 18 counselors, they have over 200 years of experience within the North Carolina Supplemental Program. Uh, we have four individuals with over 20 years, and Jody is one of those individuals. So a lot of deep relationships, a lot of passion out there, folks that are committed, but we have a lot of work to do. We have 450,000 eligibles out there that need us, uh, so we still have a lot of work ahead of us on this effort, on engagement as well as 403B. So thank you for your time, and I look forward to next quarter. We share more updates on the work we're doing. Any questions?
Question, Melinda. Our last board meeting was February 24th, when the Ukraine invaded and then the stock market really started going the heck in a handbasket. Have, with your telephone calls and so, and contacts, are you detecting any increased level of fear and anxiety with our participants? Any at all?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, I would say, you know, put that in the market volatility category. Yeah, we see a lot of increases. You know, it's pretty standard when things spike up, volatility rates spike up, that we tend to get more calls. We still do, you know, roughly the same amount of interactions, but I think, not that I have exactly. have exact numbers, but I'd say half of those calls, in some way, volatility comes up in the discussion. So what's important for us is we engage and educate to remind them what this plan is, you know, where are you in your investment lifecycle, where are you in your career, what's your long-term plan, what's your risk tolerance, and trying to help people make wise and informed decisions versus rash decisions. But we do get quite a few calls right now, probably the last month or so.
Are you seeing much of that volatility showing up in account changes, you know, going into stable value, short-term bonds?
Yeah. Great question, Melinda. So far, the trend shows that participants are staying the course in terms of especially Goalmaker usage. You know, with Goalmaker usage being so prevalent in the plan, that's one of the great things about it, we're not seeing people exit Goalmaker. I would say if we see any headwinds out there, we are starting to notice more folks starting to decrease their deferrals. So they're still deferring, but maybe a little bit less. That could also be inflation-related, where they just don't have as much disposable income to also invest. And then we noticed in the last month, there was an uptick in loans as well. So those are a couple of things to monitor. But in terms of like overall investing strategy, we really haven't seen people get out of the market and go all the stable value yet. But it's something that I think that over the next few months, we'll keep going to monitor in the executive summary reports.
Good, thank you.
We did see Q1, which I didn't share, on page 45, you can see enrollments. We had a record quarter for enrollments. So while some of those things, you said, will be decreasing, we actually had the highest number of enrollments in the first quarter since this contract started, 6,400 enrollments in the first quarter, which is 52% higher than the first quarter last year. So one of the positive things we're seeing is people are still enrolling, and we do see some.
Good, thank you.
Probably a good place to be asked this. I've asked the staff, but I'm not predicting this, I'm just asking the question. If the General Assembly were to start initiating a 401, 457 match for state employees, which is currently only available to the elder system employees right now, is that a heavy lift for you?
No. Yeah, we, since we currently have over 520 sub-plans that offer some type of employer contribution or match today. So that's an easy update on our system to facilitate that. And then we would leverage all of that communication that we do to those sub-plans that offer that now to make sure that that population is educated on that as well.
So a follow-up question. I'm not speaking for them, but if they did it, and either in terms of a percentage of payroll, a percentage of match, or a lump sum amount, does that change your answer?
No, it does not. We have, kind of have those different types of employer contribution programs today. The key thing for our team of 18 is that, you know, we have so many sub-plans that offer matches, matches or employer contributions today, and they're all over the board in terms of what those amounts are, is making sure that as Matt's team's going and meeting with those participants that day, that we were educated to know what the match is, what the contribution is, and then how that's part of your overall picture in terms of what else you want to also contribute.
And last question, if they were to bifurcate this and said, people under 50,000 get this amount of money, lump sum, that people between 50,000 get this amount, and people over 100,000 salary get this amount, they bifurcated, is that?
Yeah. I would want to make sure that we work closely with Reed on that to make sure that that's okay with the plan, Doc. And assuming that it is, then.
Okay. Thank you. If I had a question?
Can I add?
Steve, do you have something?
No, but I will, I will make one comment. I think that the more I've listened to the discussion on the 403B, the, what we've learned from that, that it reconfirmed our decision to have terminated this plan. And I think that's, makes it more convincing to me to make the right decision.
Thanks, Stephen, man. Appreciate it very much.
Okay, thank you. So for my update today, I want to keep it fairly high level and just focus on a few big items. First and foremost, the sale from Prudential to Empower has completed, became effective on, on April 1st. Very happy to share that everyone that works on the North Carolina plans from Prudential is still here with Empower, all accepted offers. So we're still on hold here, so we've seen North Carolina each and every day. Empower continues to remain committed to building such features as Goalmaker, which is such an important part of your program. And glance really quick, you know, Empower is now up to 11,500 total employees with 1.4 trillion in total retirement plan assets and 71,000 retirement plans under administration, representing 17 million total plan participants. Empower is number one in government retirement plans, and they bring the expertise in especially jumbo state programs where they now have 30 state plans like the state of North Carolina system.
Who owns Empower?
Great West Life Co. owns Empower.
When the hedge fund that owned Empower?
So for my update today, I really want to focus on some, some key summary slides. How do you?
Great West. Stable value?
No, they're not. They're not. Were they? Not today. They were, they were.
That was in my mind. I didn't get that.
Yeah, I think they stopped, they stopped in 2017, 2018 timeframe.
That's how far my mind goes back.
Slide four of the report just shows some good rolling 13-month data. What I really wanted to focus on, Treasurer Falwell, your comment at the start of the meeting, the trend, average participant balance there at the upper right-hand corner. We see that kind of fall. We don't have the number on there since it's a cent of Q1, but that's definitely been a headwind. Active participation rate continues to be strong. Average employee deferral continues to be strong. The big question out there is, you know, will inflation erode this in terms of what that average monthly deferral is? On page five, we're at an all-time high in terms of total unique participant balances. And then, as Matt said, first quarter of this year far exceeded total enrollments for first quarter of last year as well. On page six, this is really our, our goal summary page. And, you know, as I was preparing for the meeting today, I had a little bit of time to reflect back of, of, you know, I almost take for granted now the awesome numbers that we have in terms of the average monthly contribution rate, active participation rate, Goalmaker usage around all members. So I went back and pulled the December 31st, 2015 report just to kind of do a comparison. And in terms of average monthly contributions, we were at 177, so up 35% from that. The active participation rate in Q1 of 2015 was 28.71, so up 23% from that point in time. And then Goalmaker usage around, among all members, was at 57.02%, so up 22% to 60, just under 70% of all members now using Goalmaker. And I think, Melinda, that hits to your question around, you know, are people more likely to stay in the course with that Goalmaker education? So we'll continue to, I think that, that's a big number to pay attention to over the next few months if this volatility stays in, and how many people are remaining in Goalmaker. And then in terms of, you know, the employer additions, believe it or not, since 1231 of 2015, we've added 263 new employer adoptions, either into the K, the 7, or the 403B. And again, like I mentioned, the total unique participant count is at an all-time high as well, north of 300,000 folks. To, to help with the efficiency of time. Last thing that I want to reference, I won't go to the slide, but, you know, one of the things that we can particularly make sure we're laser-focused on is that like rollover statistic, Mr. Treasurer, that you had us at the report about 15 months ago. And over the, the last 12 rolling months, for all assets eligible to leave, so those participants that we knew were in terminated status, about 83.41% of those folks remained in the plan. But over the last quarter, you know, something to just monitor of the eligible assets to leave, over 95% stayed in the plan. So that's definitely an interesting statistic that we need to continue to monitor as time goes on as well.
Do you think, Katie, that credit goes to the words we're now using?
I think a lot of it, honestly, like it's, it's a collective effort amongst all the different avenues that we're communicating in to just really, almost like the 403B program, you cannot say enough of, to remind people that they do not need to leave these programs.
Ever.
Ever. Ever. And we.
Whatever, always has to be there.
Yeah. But it's amazing, like every day, even though it's like natural to us, we still get participants that when they reach out to us, that don't pay attention to the materials, the way that we all observe them. That's literally the first question your team gets, is they think that they need to do something because they're so bombarded from outside interests.
And I'll say one thing that's helped. It's formed as your signature at the bottom, that shows what they have with this program. And then there's the blanks where they've filled out what the vendor came up going to. That's a very clear, concise piece that really helps us have a really good discussion with those two. So thank you for that.
Those other people will not fill it out, and they will not sign it.
Yeah.
Because their compliance people would never allow.
Exactly.
Have the same effect.
I got a question. This one's directed to the Treasurer. Mind your questions about the possibility of the state legislature going into a match program, which would obviously drive increased enrollments in the 401K and 457. Do you have any thoughts on, if that happened, what percentage increase would we be dealing with? And how many more employees would Empower have or need to take care of that, all the extra numbers? Because if it's free money, I don't think that many people would turn it down.
Putting on a different hat for a moment, my job is to preserve and sustain these plans, no matter what plan we're talking about. It's from elders, teasers, this plan, health plan, prescription drugs. And we have been asking a lot in terms of funding from the General Assembly, from the counties and the cities, to keep those plans funded through something called an ECRIS. The E stands for extra. It's the result of the plan not earning its assumed rate of return on average for 21 years. Not for political reasons, but for mathematical reasons. When Treasurer Board was elected, we were hit with 9/11. Stock market was closed, we went into recession, plan lost billions. Then it, right toward the end of his term, beginning of Treasurer Cowell's term, she was hit with big financial crisis, and we lost tens of billions again. So that led us to come up with this ECRIS, putting more money in the plan to sort of make up not hitting our assumed rate of return on average for 20 years. That's all factual. Now, this is not a good year, obviously, for, as far as performance is concerned, we're doing a lot better than our benchmark and than our peers. But eventually, if you look at the chart of the employer contributions, which is the General Assembly, the counties, the cities, you'll, we have the possibility of that sort of peaking and then coming back down. As it starts to come back down, I want the General Assembly to start thinking about the potential of doing this match. The reason is, we're not talking about Harley-Davidsons and Hottles, we're talking about public service workers. 64% of the local workers participate in these plans, and only 40% of the state workers. Both public service workers may be doing the same job at different levels of government, but we have a 50% increase in participation rate of the local workers in these plans versus the state workers. And I'm trying to close that gap. It's all about retirement readiness and all those other things we always talk about. But just as a math person, I'm just trying to figure out with the same set of customers almost, how we possibly close that gap, which obviously results in more retirement readiness.
Thank you.
And if I could add on to that, Melinda, we actually asked, asked our partners at Empower to take a look at each of the sub-plans, where there is a match versus where there's not a match, and look, and look at, look at those participation rates. And it does jump, like the Treasurer says, when there is a match involved. So you certainly know that that would drive a higher level of participation, you're going to have that match.
By the reason that?
I agree.
Go ahead.
First lesson is, don't turn away free money. Get matched from your employer. That is an option that would make a marked difference.
Yeah, I remember when I was in the business and I was trying to explain to local employees in my client corporations why they should sign up. I did a little show and tell, and I said, I remember one, one of my clients put in 25 cents for every dollar that the employee would put in, up to like 5% or so. And all I had to do was lay a dollar down, and I said, if you put a dollar in, I'll add a quarter. That's free money, and you want to pass it up? I never lost a client to sign up. It's just really, really simple. So if that happens, if, if you're successful with the legislature, I think we will have a huge new number of participants, surpassing probably 50 to 60%.
Well, it's simple, but not easy. And so, and I'm not going to ask Lorraine to comment on something, I did, to ask her about the previous, but I'm sure Lorraine sits down with elders' participants and teasers' participants and sees a remarkable difference as she's trying to prepare them for retirement, those that did not participate in the 401 and those, and those that in the elder system that did because of the incentive of that. I was trying to assist them.
Right. Yeah, it's just a huge difference when somebody, if there's no match, and, you know, employees are like, I don't know why I'm going to do this. And the minute you say, if there's a match, then they're interested in doing, you know, at least enough to get the maximum match. I almost never see somebody offered a 401K that and, and pass it up if it's explained properly.
Yeah. Thanks, Lorraine. All right. Sorry for a sudden.
Thank you.
Is that done? Is he done?
Done.
Any questions? Let's roll through, okay? Who's next?
Jana. So who we have on the agenda is Jana Steele. She's actually on the phone. This is one of your annual projects that we perform for you all, looking at the administrative fees in particular. Jana is one of our defined contribution specialists and really, you know, our subject matter experts on all, one of our subject matter experts on all things defined contribution in particular, is at least record-keeping and administration. So I will turn the floor over to Jana and let her take you all through this. There's a lot of complex items, but I think it, you know, on the whole, it's good leading role and attention to fees, you know, it should come out in this presentation.
Excellent. Thank you, Wesley. First of all, I just wanted to do a quick sound check. Can y'all hear me okay?
Yeah, but you need to maybe sit a little closer to your mic because it sounds a little muffled.
Okay, hold on one sec. That's why the sound check is important.
That's right. Much better.
Fantastic. All right, thank you so much. Appreciate your time this morning. We're happy to have some time to go over the annual administrative fee review. This is something that we do annually on a three-year cycle, where in year one, we do a comprehensive fee review, taking a look at the plans in greater detail and acquiring bids. and acquiring bids from comparable vendors in the marketplace in order to understand if you were to go out to market, what would your fees look like? And then in the off-years, which is year two and year three, this year being year three, we do a more high-level check and we look at the fees in comparison to those that we have within our own internal database. And then we also confirm them against the fees that we see in similarly situated government plans. Government plans obviously having some specific, unique characteristics that make them different to administer. So as you can see here on page one, we just lay out what the scope of the process was and where we were looking to get to. The bottom bullet, I think, is the spoiler. The fees are currently lower than the median comparable from both our database and our government. And I think that's important to note as your plan has grown over time, both in participant count and assets, as you can see on the following page, year over year. And so, you know, the plans have continued to grow in participant counts. As mentioned in the prior discussion, if you did include a match and there was a upsurge in participant counts, that might drive further efficiencies and scale within the plan. And so that is also something that we would want to keep an eye on as your plan progresses and evolves, however it does that ultimately. Now, we've seen some pretty healthy growth in the account balances year over year. Obviously, it varies based off of political circumstances and as things have changed. But the general rule with investing is if you hold your assets in the plan, you'll see an opportunity for recovery. And your participants have done very, very well over the past three years, as well as seeing a five percent increase in participant count in the 401K plan and less than half a percent decrease in the 457. So I'm going to move us forward to page three. And I wanted to walk through this table really quickly because we use the same basic structure for the rest of the document. And it's helpful to understand what our starting point is and how we were ultimately getting to these numbers. So in the first set of five lines, the administrative services revenue, you can see the counted the balances, the unit cost, and then the annualized revenue. This will fluctuate actually, and this is a point-in-time calculation, whereas participants will come and go from the plan. And so the actual numbers will vary somewhat. But for comparison purposes, we like to have an annualized revenue number to understand how much the absolute dollars are. And as you can see in two thousand nineteen, with about five percent fewer participants, your administrative fees were actually around eight point one million dollars compared to with the higher participant count and presumably more participants paying that unit cost on the second line, second white line, that the annualized revenue has actually dropped to around eight point nine, eight point eight million. Excuse me, six point eight million, representing some pretty significant cost savings. This is due in part to the management of the plan by staff and their continued work with Prudential and now Empower to recognize fee savings with the administrative fee dropping from thirty-one dollars in two thousand and nineteen to twenty-six dollars as of year end, two thousand and twenty-one, and a proposed fee reduction that was offered this month, which would drop the fee a dollar further. So we also want to take a look at the loan origination revenue because we recognize that there are some vendors who will charge for all types of transactions. If you're taking a distribution, if you're having a quadro or any of those other things. And so we want to take into account when we're normalizing the fees and comparing you to other plans, what are the participant transactions that are creating revenue? So, excuse me, the only transaction fee that your plans have is this loan origination fee, which generates around seven hundred thousand dollars a year. I think it's notable that the number of loans in this plan dropped pretty precipitously from two thousand nineteen down to two thousand and twenty and even further into two thousand and twenty-one. So good participant savings behaviors overall. When we look at the total estimated revenue, the bottom dark gray line, that's where you can see the overall cost savings to this plan and to the participants who are paying the fees within the plan. So dropping from thirty-four dollars and sixty cents down to twenty-seven sixty is a pretty substantial fee reduction over the course of three and a half, four years. Moving on to the next page with a similar layout, you can see how the fees drop year over year, beginning with the right-hand column being the most recent, the fee proposal as of May, two thousand and twenty-two, and continuing to the second column, which is the fees that you have in place currently. And then the prior years as you move further right. Again, we're seeing pretty substantial savings year over year. Slightly less, or excuse me, slightly lower number of participants in this plan. However, you know, again, you can see that the number of loans has decreased pretty substantially. So if you were to accept the one dollar per participant administration fee reduction, it would generate around three hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars in savings compared to two thousand and nineteen. And specifically, it would save three hundred and forty-four thousand, almost three hundred and forty-five thousand in the administration services, which is just that top section of this table. So that's a twenty percent fee reduction for the participants in this plan compared to a fourteen, or excuse me, a sixteen percent fee reduction in the 401K plan. The last number we want to look at is the combined plan revenue, which is on page five. And here we add the fees together. We take a look at the number of unique participants across plans so that every person, every person's social security number is counted once, as opposed to the total number of balances, where a participant might have a balance in both plans. They would be paying the administration fee twice. For those participants, they'd be experiencing a ten-dollar fee reduction as of two thousand and twenty-one. And again, if the fee proposal is accepted, then it would be a twelve-dollar fee reduction. Any questions thus far on your current fees and how we got to these numbers? All right, fantastic. Moving forward, this is where we get into the fee review. And if I could have you jump forward to page eight, please. Thank you. So this is where we came in with the review of our database. And I want to be clear that our database includes both corporate and governmental plans. And so the fees that you're seeing here might be slightly aggressive for a state plan where there are some administrative complexities that you would not see in a corporate plan. However, these are jumbo plans where the average participant count is a hundred and sixty-three thousand employees in the 401K plan data set, which is table six. And in table seven, the median participants is thirty-seven, and the average is almost fifty-two thousand. So it's a very close comparator group, but I also wanted to note that these fees are slightly more aggressive than what you would see under a government plan. Your current fees, there's the twenty-six dollar per participant fee, and then there's the total revenue per participant, which comes out to twenty-nine dollars. With the proposed fee, you would come in at twenty-five and twenty-eight dollars, which, you know, as you can see, the per-participant admin fee looks like it's a little bit high. But again, that's because there's this component where other record keepers will charge additional transaction fees, which ultimately ends up bumping up the average to twenty-nine dollars per head, which is right in line with where you are currently and a dollar higher than where you would be if you choose to accept the fee proposal. In the 457 plan, this plan benefits from being bundled with the 401K plan. If it were to be priced separately, it would likely be priced with a, with less efficiencies in mind. So what we see in the database, when we look at smaller plans like the 457 plan, and smaller, of course, being a relative term, we see that the median comes in at thirty-nine, which is also what the total per-participant revenue is in comparison to your plan, which, as I mentioned, benefits from having the same fees as the 401K plan. The following page takes into account some of the complexities of the government, government plan landscape, where you see a much higher incidence of onsite educational support or one-on-one support during the COVID pandemic, where onsite might not have been available, as well as the volume payroll files. And so a couple of things that I wanted to point out on this page are, first of all, the number of participating employers that you have in the plan. This is important because it is a characteristic that drives additional work for the record keeper because they have to accept multiple files from various different groups. They have to upload those files. There's a lot of processing and error checking. And because of that, it does drive the fees, as I mentioned on the prior page, a little bit higher than what we would see in a corporate plan, where there might be between one and five payroll fees coming in. So in our comparator group here, the median number of participating employers was seven hundred and ninety-four and the average was seven ninety-eight. So again, very similar to, or more similar to the volume of payroll files that you would see, as well as similar account balances. As you can see on the top line, the range was between thirty-nine to almost three hundred thousand in participant counts in the comparator group, with the median being eighty-one thousand and the average being a hundred and nineteen thousand. What we saw when we looked at these more complicated plans that have similar administration requirements to your plans, we saw that the range of administration fees came in between eighteen and sixty-seven dollars, and that's a pretty wide band. But it does represent the fact that these governmental plans have the additional onsite participation needs, participant needs, as well as the additional payroll programming and some of the other features that are unique to a state plan. So we consider this to be a reasonable comparator group and perhaps a slightly better fit for your plan in light of those complexities and how those drive fees. As you can see on the bottom two lines, the median is thirty-eight dollars, the average is thirty-four, and that's in comparison to your twenty-six and the proposed twenty-five dollar per participant fee. So in light of this data set, you look extremely competitive. And I think it's noteworthy that the North Carolina plans have been so proactive in reducing their fees year over year for those participants in those programs. So that takes us through the administrative fee review. Are there any questions or any feedback?
This is the treasurer. We have to pay you. They could actually think it's not being aligned with the median if they wanted to. So be that liar on the downside. Go ahead. Someone had a question from the.
Yeah, this is, this is, I'm just, I was reading and I'm, question on page eight, under the table seven, you have 401KB fees down there under the 457Bs.
Thank you so much for catching that. Yes, that's a typo. I will fix that. Thank you.
Okay.
It should say 457.
Yes.
Yes.
And all I have one thing, this is Elizabeth Hood from Callan. I just wanted to mention why we have the information on page eight and page nine. So of course, supplemental retirement plans look a lot more like the government plans, and that's a very relevant benchmark. Page eight is also important. It's broader data set, gives us good information. But if we think about conversations with various participants, constituents, Mr. Treasurer, you mentioned P and I. A lot of our individual participants and some of the local government folks tend to read things like the Wall Street Journal, USA Today. A lot of those numbers tend to be more broadly based. So as you think about those conversations, if they're citing something that they read in the paper, that might be part of that difference. They might have corporate information in there in addition to the government plans. We wanted to make sure that you're armed for those conversations and that you understand some of the differences between how we benchmark and look versus some of the other information they read in the press. A good news is you have good versus both.
Thank you. So as we just heard from Jana, thank you, Jana. Our plan shows well against benchmarks and the benchmark group. And as such, we had talked with our partners at Empower. They had come back to us with some proposed terms in terms of taking our current contract, which ends at the end of twenty-three, and extending that out in exchange for the fee reduction. And so as was mentioned, the fee reduction would move us from twenty-six dollars per head to twenty-five dollars per head in exchange for a five-year contract extension. We believe at this time, this is the best direction for the plans because this will allow us to really be able to experience the Empower platform and technology, experience their service model without really having, even though we are changing record keepers, without really going out to RFP, going through that entire process to change, to change the record keepers. And this does not do away with our ability to be able to go out to bid at any point in the future that we may wish to. So we keep that right, but we can, at this point in time, also take on a reduction for our plan. So staff would recommend that we accept this proposal and move forward with this at this point in time. Any questions regarding the staff's proposal?
Just by agreeing to this, if they came to the conclusion that they could lower it even more as we go forward, that can be amended.
Yes. There's already some opportunities that we've been, that we've been under discussion with them about those types of future opportunities.
Got a question from the floor.
Yeah, this is Steve. Two questions really. One, had we considered its contract yet before this discussion? Or when would we normally do it if it's eighteen months out? And the second question is, it says without cause in a ninety-day termination if we decided to do something different. Is that, just make, I just want to clarify that.
Yeah, so in terms of your first question, that's kind of where we are now. We are kind of at the point to where we have to make a decision that if we wanted to go out to RFP and test the market, we would need to make that decision about in this timeframe to allow us the right amount of time. right amount of time to engage with Cowen to perform that RFP, get in the results, evaluate those results. So that's kind of why this is coming to the board at this point in time, right at that time now. In terms of your second question, as part of our current, current contract, which this would just extend that contract. We have the right to terminate that contract without cause with a 90-day notification period. So at any point, if we decided, hey, we think we would like to go out to RFP and we did so. And we wanted to choose a different vendor, we would be able to exit this contract with that, with that 90-day notification period. Does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you very much.
Steven, is that, this is treasurer, does that in your thinking, does that create the flexibility that you think we deserve?
Absolutely, yes. And I just did not want to preclude any options as things change the next few years that we would be, we would be held to a six-and-a-half-year contract without options.
And this starts in
Would start in January of 24.
We'll ask for a motion in a second to take staff's recommendation and then have more discussion if necessary. Do I hear a motion to accept staff's recommendation to act on the contract proposal with Empower?
Lumston, Lumston, second.
Okay. Okay. Thank you both. Need further discussion? I guess one question I had, is five years a typical term?
Yes, sir.
With that, any other questions? Hearing none, we can work to call the roll.
Treasurer Falwell. Chavella Thomas.
Aye.
Lorraine Johnson.
Aye.
Melinda Barron.
Aye.
Steve Bean.
Aye.
And Wynden Hibler.
Aye.
Thank you very much. We're now onto Galliard and our investment update. Paul, we can't hear you if you're speaking.
Stable base, I don't think it's up. Paul, you're on mute? Paul, are you out there?
All right, somebody will work to get him back in. Let's skip over to, talk to Elizabeth. And if you don't mind, as you've done in the past, tell the first one and then the last one. Anything that's repetitive in the other.
Penny, are you able to pull up the Cowen report? We're going a little out of order. We couldn't get Galliard. Does everyone else have director point? So we'll skip over, we did provide the April information just for informational purposes if we can move forward to the full reports. As of March.
Provide some naps and water and sweets in the break room if you might need anything.
So starting on the next page, we'll cover a few things and Mr. Treasurer definitely at higher level. So we'll start with just a quick overview of the capital markets. As everyone has been alluding, they were not good. So we have a high level there, really more to set the stage to help you all evaluate the performance of your options. So we'll start with the high-level options. That's what the participants see. And then we'll hit a few highlights of managers on the watch list. It's kind of the standouts of top performers and bottom performers. So starting with the capital markets, again, I think everyone's aware, not, not a favorable environment. We saw global equities and fixed income down roughly the same amount, which is pretty unusual. We also saw a lot of reversals of trends that have been going on for a long period of time, which changes things with the options a bit. So looking at US equity on this first page, the broad market was down about 5.3% for the quarter. Over the year though, still in positive territory, so up almost 12% for the year. The worst performer in US equities this quarter was large cap growth. That is very different than what we've seen for the last 10 years. Large cap growth has really been creating a lot of the positive growth that we've seen in the past. So big reversal there, down 9% just for the quarter. Interestingly though, over the year, large cap growth is still up 15%. So I think that really highlights the magnitude of the performance we've seen from that asset class that even with the 9% drop this quarter, they're still up 15 over the last year.
That's a, March 31st.
Not in March. It's gotten worse.
Unfortunately.
Unfortunately.
And you said unusual, it's never happened. You said it's a little unusual what's happened in the first four months. About the bond and the stock market being down sequentially. I don't think it's ever happened.
Well, yeah, so they're actually, out of the last 100, if you look on annual timeframes. For the last 100 years, this has only happened in two calendar years. We're both on an annual basis, the stock market went down.
Thank you. On the next page, a quick look at international, so non-US equities. Similar story here, broad market down 5.4%, so about the same as the US decline. The invasion of Ukraine has had a significant impact on emerging markets that's continued, especially energy, commodities. Some of the areas of the market that are more closely related to Russia. So again, negative performance there. And then on the next page. Fixed income also down. So here even bigger decline down 5.9%. This is the worst single quarter for the act since 1980. We've been talking about the Fed and prior quarters. So that did begin raising rates, 25 basis points. We've seen further increases since then. We're expecting more to come. Environment has had an impact to, again, negative returns here with rising rates and a slightly inverted yield curve. So all that to say, it was a challenging environment for all of the options in the plan. If we can move forward to page five, so jumping ahead two pages to page five, we'll just give a quick snapshot of the overall balances in the plan. Hearing what we did about the capital market environment, not surprising that the overall market value of the plan, the participant balances did decrease. So usually we have positive performance to balance out the net outflows. Here we have net outflows and negative performance. So ending the quarter at about $15.5 billion. Look at what drove that on page six. And start again focusing on the participant level options. So we want to think about their experience and what they see on an individual basis. Some of this gets rolled into Goalmaker, so it's even, even less volatile for those participants in Goalmaker return. On the top of the page, so these are the tier two for those participants building. So we have the passive options. So all major asset classes, participants who want to have a low fee market beta or effectively just they want to look like the market, have that exposure for low cost. They have the option to use the passive. So again, equities, fixed income, tips are all offered for participants there. All of those are relatively closely tracking their benchmarks. So that's what we keep an eye on there is that tracking there. So those are all performing in line with their respective indices. And then on the bottom of the page, these are the actively managed options. So we'll do more about stable value in a few minutes, but the bright star, it's not often that a positive 39 basis points is the highlight of the quarter, but that's, that's where we are. So Galliard continues to perform well on an absolute basis also versus peers. Looking at fixed income, I mentioned before, we saw a lot of reversals. Fixed income has been performing very positively versus their benchmark. If you look at their longer-term numbers, absolute returns are good, relative benchmark returns were good. This quarter, a little bit behind benchmark, the underlying managers, largely duration positioning. So just for the quarter, longer-term participant experience has been positive relative to benchmark there. Large cap core, another reversal. Effectively, everything in December that did well versus benchmark, we flip flopped, right? So large cap had been very consistently outperforming the benchmark, did not do that in this quarter. So large cap was down 5.6, Russell 1000 down 5.1. So down a bit more and that underperformance has impacted the longer-term annualized numbers as well, so modestly behind there. And Wes will talk a little bit, most of that underperformance is driven by the reversal between growth and value. Growth had led to that performance in the past, that switched, which is the same story for international. Much of the outperformance that we had seen prior to this quarter, international pretty steadily outperformed their benchmark. Due in large part to Bailey Gett with the core manager. So we saw a flip flop. Good news is the value manager held up well, but with that reversal, we're seeing some short-term underperformance. Last but not least, here too was small in mid-cap. We did see the option outperform for the quarter and pretty significantly during the year. So down 5.6 versus 5.8 for the quarter and actually positive 2.98. So up a good bit more than the benchmark of 0.3 for the year. So that repositioning, changing the underlying mandate of earnest, rebalancing the weights has been additive for participants. So we're going to, again, Wes is going to hit a few highlights, but I think it's always important to take that step back and think about the participant experience. So we look at the underlying managers because they contribute to this. But fortunately, and this is again, the beauty of the multi-manager structure is we're just sort of seeing the volatility of each individual manager. So this allows that roll up. So it's still market volatility, but when we look at the underlying managers, participants don't see that level of volatility, just as high level. Any questions so far? If not, we'll move forward to page 12.
This is Steve. I had one question and he skipped over it on page eight. Can you comment about Sands, why they were so outlier?
Sure. So Sands, as you know, they focus a lot on disruptive innovation. And, you know, what can you expect from the types of companies that they buy, you know, sustainable growth? Sustainable above-average growth. You know, they look for companies with a leadership position. They look for companies with strong financial strength. So the other, you know, subtle thing to note about Sands, that Sands that doesn't really stick out here is they, they have a concentrated portfolio. So they're buying fewer, fewer names. They tend to be lower market cap than the index that's as this index, the Russell 1000 group has become more and more concentrated. You know, Sands has been viewed that as an opportunity to be very different from the index and say, we're buying you know, companies with a lower market capitalization that they think have better opportunities for growth going forward. Now just kind of bringing that back to that the higher level theme is that the top 10 names in that Russell 1000 group have held up a lot. As interest rates have gone up and some of these hyper-growth names the market has reset that valuation pretty significantly and pretty quickly. So Sands has lost more. I think that the key thing to note about Sands though, they have been here before. They have managed this strategy, this type of strategy since 1992. They lived through the tech bubble. They managed through that. They managed through the global financial crisis. And now this is, this is one of the periods where, as you look at how this shorter-term, really the last two quarters. It has, you know, really brought, dragged down some of those longer-term numbers. And, you know, one of the things, we had some conversation with staff last quarter about Sands and just the magnitude of their underperformance and shouldn't they, you know, shouldn't we maybe consider something more cautionary about, about their performance? You know, we'll get to that in a minute. But in 2020, Sands was ahead of their benchmark by over 30%. So, you know, I think for consistency's sake, we should have had them cautionary when they were above the benchmark by 30%. Now, kind of fast forward to where we are today, they're behind their benchmark by about 30%. So, you know, I think it's, you are certainly cautionary, we're paying very close attention to what they're doing. What the asset flows are because, you know, you get to a certain point, you start to see clients leave. You haven't seen that at all. I want to say that the strategy is still, you know, they have been, you know, managed capacity really well such that you know, they weren't taking any new flows from, I believe, the mutual fund for some time. So, you know, I, I hope that answers your question on Sands. I know I've kind of jumped around a lot, but did I answer your question, Steve?
Yes, basically. I just, I haven't looked at them close enough to, but I assume they were heavily in the in the high-tech volatile sector, but I have not closely looked at it. But thank you for the comment.
Sure. And just to put names to that, C Limited, I think is Singaporean. Call it the gaming company that has been one of the biggest detractors as the company underwhelmed earnings. They were one of the earlier ones to underwhelm on earnings. They got written down. Also China is one of their big markets and, you know, given what happened in China with Xi Jinping saying that we want less gaming to go on and we're going to do so much as limit the amount of gaming our consumers can experience. This one, this one has been a constant detractor. Netflix, I think everyone subscriber wrote the stall. That's one of their big holdings and then Shopify. So a lot of these, these companies that, you know, did exceptionally well in that 2020 timeframe, the work from home environment, that reversal has hit. You know, Sands is, you know, you know, whereas you all gained from them a while back, they're giving back what they gained.
This is Melinda. Do you think Sands right now is taking advantage of the market downturns by taking capital losses and swapping the proceeds from several companies and automatically reinvesting to reduce the taxes for the end of the year?
To, I don't know if it's so much, a lot of their client base is institutional, so the tax considerations are less. But the volatility, you know, I think a lot of the perception is managers do well on the downside. That's not always the case. Where volatility tends to help is what you're, what you're talking about exactly is giving them, they may have had a couple of names on their bench saying, if it's to the right price, we want to buy it. And certainly this volatility, as I mentioned, it has, it's hit some disproportionately hard according to Sands. To where, you know, the Apples and the Microsofts are trading at these huge valuation premium. But not the really good growers that they think will actually grow. So the, the proof, you know, for Sands will be, are they buying these companies that truly have that durable, sustainable, above-average growth? And if so, they'll ultimately do well. But if they have companies that are continually saying, you know what, we're not, those earnings, the revenue targets that we said that we were going to hit, we're not hitting them. That, that's a different story. That could enter Sands to some degree.
Okay, well, I know you just have to have the cash in order to be able to do that. And if they're, you know, keep the cash to the minimal, the only way to be able to do that is just take two companies, sell and swap the funds and go elsewhere or reinvest. go elsewhere or reinvest.
As of the quarter end, their turnover had not picked up.
Okay.
They're sticking with the ones that they have.
These two will pass. We just don't know how long it's going to be.
I think all eyes are on the Fed as it relates to, you know, it seems as though the, as more and more interest rates rise above what was expected, these growth names in particular, these, these higher price, higher multiple growth names are really taking it a lot harder than the rest of the market. All right. Let's go to page 12 if we can. And Elizabeth talked about the high, high level. I'm going to dig in a little bit more on the individual managers. And really this is, let me explain this stoplight page that we do. This is generated by Callan's Global Manager Research. We ask them every quarter to effectively give us your collective kind of Callan opinion on these managers. And just, you know, there's not a whole lot that changes quarter to quarter, but there are some changes that I do want to point out. Now, if you were to compare this stoplight page to a year ago, you would have seen the two value managers have a cautionary kind of yellow color for their short term performance. That has changed as they, you know, were struggling from some of those energy picks earlier on. Those energy holdings that they had and were, have reversed course and that has led to outperformance of both Macquarie, Hotchkiss and Wiley. So they've done well. They've benefited from some of these changes and inflation expectations. What changed from, for this quarter is if you go down and you look at Sands, we've talked about Sands, but the, the little bit more cautionary on the short term performance of Sands, the magnitude of the underperformance where that manifests itself is monitoring their firm level cash flows. They remain a very healthy profitable firm, but, you know, just certainly something, something to watch as, you know, that they have, they have really struggled as of late. I think what is a concept that Elizabeth mentioned is very important is how these work together. So a year ago, we were talking a lot about Loomis and Loomis' challenges. And, and, you know, do we really need Loomis? We've got Sands here. And this is, this is a quarter that certainly highlights the role of Loomis. Loomis tends to not buy those super aggressive growth names. They're, they're buying more quality growth names that really have arguably a little bit more reasonable expectations baked in. Tend to do better as markets are volatile like they are. So, so Loomis, you know, has, has been a little bit of the balance out to Sands here. But this is, this is a time that we would expect for Loomis to do well as, as in these types of markets. They manage some of this volatility. Going to jump to the small cap on page 13 and very quickly hit. I, I do want to underscore what Elizabeth mentioned in that your small cap option for a while. This was, this was a bit of a challenge for, for us and this board to really talk about performance and at the option level. Good thing is that your managers themselves, the changes that you all made have, have worked well. And then the overall option level performance is, is above the benchmark, ranks favorably relative to peers for the year. The one that is maybe a little bit of a standup here is Wedge. And we've talked a lot about Wedge. The message that we want to get across here to this board is that should something change with Wedge, Callan and staff will be ready to react to that. We are suggesting a little bit more time with Wedge. What we were hoping to come to you all with today is our, our numbers that show that they were ahead of the benchmark. Just a couple of reminders. Game stocks run quite a bit as you look at their attribution. That and, you know, up until January 2021, game stocks where Russell 1000, Russell 2000 Value Index, the Small Cap Value Index, that was where it was most pronounced that Wedge does not buy those types of securities. That's, that started to sell off. What has hurt more recently is just a small underweight to energy, things like that. Where in the 2000 Value Index and the Small Cap Value Index, G is up close to 100% for the year. And almost everything else is flat, if not negative. So just by being, having a very small underweight to energy, you know, that, that was a challenge for Wedge. But they, from January 2021 to where we were as of, I'd say, you know, February, March timeframe, Wedge was ahead of their benchmark. They were showing good improvement. And then they had a couple of stocks in the retail category that pulled them back below benchmark. Again, you know, I think that, you know, as we spoke with our manager research team about this and we're, we're having continued conversations with them, continued conversations with Wedge and continued conversations with staff. The, the message is that this is the last life for Wedge. We need to see something. So, you know, just wanted, wanted to make sure we underscore that message. But, you know, we're, we're, we're paying close attention to them, paying close attention to their flows out of the firm. And so far, Wedge's assets remain relatively stable. So there, there haven't been a lot of other plans or clients that have moved their money. But that is something that we're, we're paying close attention to. The only other thing, I'm going to just skip over the more obvious ones, but on page 14, I do think this is maybe arguably a good segue into Paul has made it on the phone. Galliard's Stable Value, if you compared this report to last quarter, the several quarters before, you would have seen the overall status say under review, which is a more elevated than cautionary. It's effectively a hold position for us and just one of those where we were very worried about assets, you know, the, the change of ownership, the change in personnel. As we have lived through more time with, with Galliard and their, their management, the second, you know, third generation of leaders here at the firm, we're getting more and more comfortable. So we upgraded their status from under review to cautionary. Still remains on your watch list. If the status quo is maintained, I would expect that ultimately every time we'll have conversations with staff and with you all about removing them from your watch list.
So what percentage of Galliard, what percentage of our DC plans are they? 25%?
Yes. 15%, 15%.
So in a hypothetical situation, not just with us or with Galliard, have you ever came that close to that big of a decision with any other client regarding need to exit?
I would say, I would argue we've come closer. Now, where.
May not have been with them, it may have been some other, whatever.
Yeah, this, this is a big one and one where at the end of the day, this is meant to be capital reservation. And it's not meant to reach for that incremental yield. It's not meant to, in, in markets like we're experiencing today, they're meant to hold up. And they're doing just that. Galliard has lived through any cycle, right? So, you know, I, I think they never changed that. What we were worried about is, is a change in direction. Should they continue to lose personnel? But, but.
Performances remain steady. It's really organization and team that is what that, that status of being on watch.
Okay.
It's stuck to the new thing.
And. Sure, answering your question. If you had gotten to the brink, that's a seismic decision. It is. And one that we would have had a lot of conversations, you know, really prepped this board and prep staff.
Just wanted to get a yeah.
Yeah, we, we had a lot of conversations with staff historically. As I mentioned, it's, it's been probably two, two and a half years of living with them on watch, just getting comfortable with, with the changes that are made. Galliard emails us when, whenever anybody leaves the firm, whether or not they're considered a professional or, you know, a junior person. They, they email us and let us know, which is a, a higher level of monitoring than we do.
And Mr. Treasurer, we have had clients terminate options that were in the double digits plan assets. Requires a lot of communication. So we spend a lot of time making sure that participants understand and know what the options are. So it, it's a communication challenge, but it is doable if necessary.
Okay. Thank you.
Questions?
Any other questions? We all headed from here. Did not on time. I thought you were getting out of here on time. All right. Thank you very much. Now we're back to Paul. Paul, are you with us?
Can you hear me now? Can you?
Yes. Yes.
Okay. I apologize for the technology issues, but good morning, Mr. Treasurer, board members, staff and guests. You know, we could, we could turn to page one of my presentation under section one there. And basically, you know, where we are since the highlighting the progress made in the sale of Wells Fargo Asset Management, which Galliard was a wholly owned subsidiary of, and now we are now Allspring Global Investments, which Galliard is a wholly owned subsidiary of. Three, three points on this page that have changed since our last meeting. Number one, Wells Fargo's passive non-voting stake is less than 8.3%, which is down from the originally scheduled 9.9%. I believe that's just to give a little bit more, give a little bit more equity to the senior investment personnel if need be. So that was one point. The other point is on that April 1st, 2022, mentioned about SEI. They became the new trustee for the Wells Fargo Collective Investment Trust. So how does this affect the Stable Value Fund for North Carolina? Well, the only affected item was the cash liquidity buffer, which has a target allocation of about 2% of the assets. And a couple, a couple items to note about this change. And one is that its name, its underlying vehicle name, it was formerly known as the Wells Fargo BlackRock Short Term Investment Fund. And that's going to change since we are no longer affiliated with Wells Fargo, just to Short Term Investment Fund. And they'll still be managed by BlackRock in the same way it was before. The other change in regards to this is that there will be a very slight increase in the overall expense ratio of the, of the total fund because of this new trustee fee. Historically, Wells Fargo did not charge a trustee fee on this small liquidity buffer. And we were able to use that, utilize that fund for years without incurring a trustee fee. As such, as Wells Fargo's commingle trust complex is moving to SEI, they are implementing, you know, a small charge for their trustee services on just the liquidity buffer. And to put it in perspective of what makes up the Stable Value Fund is there's one commingle trust and that's the liquidity buffer. And all the other accounts, you know, the, the fixed income investments managed by Galliard and the external managers are all separate accounts. So those are unaffected. So what this means is that there will be a small, small fee increase of two one hundredths of a basis point. And if you're looking at that percentage wise, it's 0.0002%. So it's a, it's a very nominal fee increase, but you know, the, you know, rest assured, we at Galliard continue to look to minimize operating fees where possible. Over the past few years, as I mentioned in previous meetings, we've been very successful in lowering the fund's overall fees through a, through a number of larger fee savings. One that took place this quarter as our management fee was reduced at, you know, at the beginning of the quarter, which I'll cover on our fee page. But, you know, the savings from the, the savings from our investment management fee decrease more than offsets the small incremental fee for the trustee services provided by SEI. Then the one last item there is it says that our office was opening on May 2nd. They did push that back to May 31st, so our office is open for business on Tuesday. Were there any questions on the SEI, SEI news item?
No questions.
Okay. If we, in the moment, in, in terms of time, let's just flip ahead to page three. This kind of gives us some view of, you know, the, the metrics. Yeah, there it is. The metrics of the State of North Carolina Stable Value Fund as of March 31st, '22. And again, the portfolio has continued to provide consistent expected statistics, even in this volatile market that was just covered by our friends at Callan. On the left-hand column, we see the assets as a 331 or roughly 2.41 billion. And putting that in perspective, they've increased marginally at the fringes of about 26.2 million since last quarter. So if we break down that 26.2 million, 16.7 million came from net inflows for our participants and the, the remaining 9.5 million was interest earnings. So incongruent with the comments that were made before, not a lot of movement from participants flooding into Stable Value as of March 31st, '22. And more or less tells me that, you know, participants are staying the course. If we look at the portfolio characteristics on the lower left-hand corner between last quarter and this quarter, we can see average book value, financial strength ratings have not changed and they remain strong at A+. Same can be said about the underlying quality of the bonds that make up the State of North Carolina Stable Value Fund, where they stayed at double A for the past quarter. The number of wrap contract issuers did not change. They remained at five. The net blended yield or the crediting rate did remain flat over the past two quarters at 1.65%. But the number right below it, the, the underlying yields, however, did increase from the quarter from 1.35% to 2.76%. Now again, that 2.76% yield to maturity still provides a higher yield than a comparable, let's say a money market fund as provided by the 91-day T-bill, which had a yield of 0.52% or the three-year constant maturity treasury, which is the main benchmark. That had a yield of 2.45% and that was as of March 31st as well. Duration increased slightly since last quarter. And again, this, this is continuing on from, you know, the, the message last quarter that's mainly due to mortgage extension in the underlying bond portfolios, especially those compared to the Bloomberg Intermediate Aggregate Index. Really what, what is happening here is interest rates increase, there's less demand for mortgage refinancing, and that leads to mortgage extension duration. So, you know, the duration increase was not specific to the State of North Carolina Stable Value Fund as we've seen it in other portfolios. Again, you know, Galliard does not make duration bets. So again, it is just a, it's a occurrence of the underlying benchmark that we're, that the underlying fixed income vehicles are benched against. So the, the one, the one number I'd like to spend a little bit more time on is the market to book ratio. Now, while market yields have risen recently, the effect on the underlying bond portfolios has been negatives. You know, as interest rates go up, bond prices fall. And in regards to the market to book ratio being under 100%, the last time we saw it drop below that threshold was in February of 2019. And that was because interest rates did increase in 2018. In terms of, you know, how that affects in the short term, rising interest rates or vis a vis a lowered market to book ratio should not be a cause for undue concern for those invested in Stable Value. In fact, we expect that rising rates will ultimately benefit Stable Value investors. Manageable increases in rates allow for the reinvestment at higher yields and should result in higher crediting rates and greater earnings potentials for Stable Value investors going forward. To put it in a little bit more context, you know, what Stable Value is, it's essentially a high quality fixed income investment. And the Stable Value Fund offers the added protection of investment contracts. And those are issued either by banks or insurance companies that are designed to protect Stable Value investors from losses resulting from rising interest rates. And that's what we saw for some of the fixed income options on a standalone basis over the first quarter. While the increase in interest rates will typically cause the market value of a bond portfolio to decline, a Stable Value Fund seeks to smooth these underlying bond portfolio returns, earning, earning a relatively consistent rate that generally tracks market rates over time. Again, so Stable Value, rather than recognizing these mark to market losses immediately, a Stable Value Fund's investment contracts are a stable value fund's investment contracts are designed to amortize declines in market value and protect investors from the volatility that a bond fund might experience due to changes in interest rates or other factors. You know, because the contracts smooth the return profile of the underlying bonds, the yield or the crediting rate earned by stable value investors tends to generally track current market rates as, but as with the lag, as we've seen in the past. And as a result, in a rising rate environment, stable value investors gain again from the benefit of reinvesting at higher rates while being protected from the associated mark-to-market decline in, in market value. And if we take a step back, looking at historical data, we can see that stable value crediting rates attract changes in market rates on a lag basis over time, and we expect this to be hold true going forward. Now again, you know, market to, market to book ratios will likely drop below 100% in rising rate environment. This is by design, and we fully expected it over a normal interest rate cycle. You know, it is important to note that a declining mark-to-book ratio is evidence of the stable value contracts protecting the fund's investors from again, these mark-to-market declines. So rising interest rate environments are nothing new to stable value. Stable value asset classes have a track record of over 30 years, and Galliard's stable value funds have performed as expected in a variety of these market environments. So that was a little bit to digest. Are there any questions on the market to book ratio?
No questions.
Okay.
This is Lorraine, I just have a question. I don't have the question. I'm just, I can't tell you how happy I am that we have this option in the plan. Not all companies or employers offer this as part of their plan. And you know, when I have financial planning clients come in and they have access to the North Carolina plan, it's not unusual for me to take the part of their portfolio that I would have put in money market and CDs and put a really good solid chunk of it in here and then take more risk outside the portfolio and take advantage of the really good solid interest rate and, and backing that we have. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity.
How long is this? And hang on a minute. Paul, how long is this option? Has it always been with the plan?
Yeah, it's been, it's been in the plan since December 1st of 2010. So I think it's about 11 and a quarter years.
Yeah. Good. Lorraine, to your point, it wasn't always there, and so I applaud the previous treasurer for putting it there. Was I here then?
Thank you, Melinda.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, well. And really, okay, thank you. And then really on the columns, columns on the right, those are the assets. And again, they've been growing consistently over the past few years. And if you look at the portfolio distribution below that, you know, it really shows that we remain consistent in the underlying allocations with that small liquidity buffer that demonstrates truly that the portfolio remains fully invested in the fixed income market. Because even though we are seeing volatility in the market and there has been a flight to quality, we are finding some good opportunities, you know, albeit with our, our risk-return constraints for, for better, better yields and better returns for participants going forward. If we flip to page four, these, this page shows the actual participant results, net of all fees. And again, strong, steady, consistent, long-term relative outperformance that we've been able to provide participants. You know, and again, this is the participant experience net of all fees as of March 31st, '22. And really, over the, over the first quarter, we nearly matched the, the underlying benchmark, that three-year constant maturity treasury, you know, within two basis points. But more impressively, we've outperformed, you know, by 86 basis points over the year. And even over longer timeframes over five, 10, and inception returns of 11 and a quarter years, you know, it's same, it shares the same story of outperformance. You know, 77, 100, and 118 basis points of outperformance. So again, very strong relative long-term outperformance by the underlying investments in a quarter where frankly, both, both equities and fixed income instruments on a market value basis had negative returns. Stable value acted as it should by providing principal preservation in these volatile markets. And again, as we saw, you know, in this last quarter, one thing to keep in mind in future quarters is that again, the stable value fund may lag its benchmark, that three-year constant maturity treasury yield, if there is a material rise in interest rates. But it's not immediate due to that book value smoothing of returns that I explained earlier. So you know, it's doing exactly what we, what we think it should. Moving ahead to page five. This is basically the historical cash flows. And again, that message that we're not seeing a lot of participants, you know, barrel into stable value can be shown on this, on this chart. I mean, we did see that big flow in the first quarter of March 20, but really the figures here on this page don't appear to be much different than our other stable value separate accounts. As participants, you know, are, are taking those macroeconomic topics such as Ukraine, the supply chain shortages, inflation, you know, they're taking all of those into, into perspective. So that being said, we're not seeing anything really out of the ordinary here. Page six. This kind of gives you the, the rolling or the historical portfolio characteristics over the last nine quarters. And again, what we see in the upper left-hand corner, we see the ongoing amortization of the underlying gains and, you know, what will be the losses for the market value of the fixed income fund. But again, what we're showing here, it's a pretty stable historical net blended yield, and that's what we want to provide to participants. You know, I would think as this has kind of moved toward the moldering, as interest rates had, had fallen over 2020 and started to flatten. And, and then I would think that they, they should start to rise as they follow the movement of interest rates, albeit due to that lag because of the smoothing of the underlying market value bond portfolio. So you know, where I would think we are is we are near that flattened stage as we had a blended yield, a net blended yield of 165 over the third quarter of last year, the fourth quarter of last year, and the first quarter of this year. However, you know, one thing we will need to take into consideration is that amortization of the losses of the underlying fixed income portfolios we saw in the first quarter. So it may dip, but you know, this would also be offset by the, by, by some extent to in reinvesting at those higher yields. So nothing that we see here that is, is of worry. Again, I, I talked about the duration of the portfolio moving up a tick. And again, that was due to the underlying index that we compare against, not to Galliard making duration bets. If we look at the upper right-hand corner, you know, the, the market to book is the, the one number that I wanted to highlight before. And again, you know, they, it recently decreases, the underlying yields, which you see in that lower right-hand chart, have generally increased. So again, we're not concerned with the sub 100% market book, as explained earlier, because again, this is exactly what we expect stable value to do in a rising interest rate environment. So again, the, the, the drop in market book in the upper right corresponds directly with the increases in the underlying yields, which you see in the lower right-hand corner. So as a result, in a rising rate environment, stable value investors gain from the benefit of one, reinvesting at higher rates while being protected from those associated mark-to-market decline and market value of the underlying fixed income. So that's good to see there. If we, if we flip to page seven real briefly, just want to talk about, you know, consistency of the last quarter. Again, this is, these are the book value wrappers that provide that smoothing of the returns for participants and provide that, you know, that protection from the immediate mark-to-mark losses. And again, they all remain, all the book value wrappers in the plan remain all investment grade and maintain the same financial strength ratings from, from a quarter ago. And all are two notches above our lowest minimum allowable grade. If we look at the fees over, you know, the RAP fees between the quarter, last quarter and this quarter, they remain consistent at that 15 basis points. And again, that, that one, that life insurance company separate account, that is at 17 basis points because that also includes trustee custody fees. And if you were to take those out, the, the trustee custody fees, they would be right in line with the other, the other 15 basis points. So again, we don't have any concerns there. While we have been seeing fees come down for wrappers in the past few quarters, you know, my, my guess right now is 15 basis points will be the floor for now as, as none of our 10 approved RAP providers has gone lower than that 15 point, 15 basis point threshold. If we turn ahead to page 11, this will just kind of highlight the fee page. There we go. And again, these are the, the fees charged on the stable value account. Again, another good message to share that fees have dropped since last quarter. Overall, the total fees have dropped about 1.8 basis points. And that was at about 29.3 basis points over the third and fourth quarters of 2021 to what's being shown now at 27 and a half basis points, which represents a decrease of 6.1%. But you know, a big chunk of that was, you know, the administrative overlay fee, which went down from 2.7 to 1.4 basis points. So if we, we remove that, we saw fees did come down about a half a basis point from 26.6 basis points to 26.1. So again, the main source of this reduction was from the Galliard management fee decrease that I mentioned last quarter, but went into effect January 1st, '22. And again, this is, this is because of the most, the MFM status that we have with the state of North Carolina. So you know, I did a back-of-the-envelope calculation last quarter, and it, it basically came out to about 112,500 fee savings annually for, with this fee reduction. So you know, we're happy to provide it, and you know, we, we are definitely thankful of your, your longstanding tenure with Galliard. Any questions on this page?
No questions.
Okay, okay. And really quickly, you know, on page, on page 13, you know, we see, we see, this is the rolled-up total portfolio statistics. And the manager allocation column that we see on the left is not materially changed over the quarter. The external manager allocation has remained near that 50% mark consistently. The high-level message here is that the fund is positioned a little bit more conservatively, but we are still actively looking for relative value in spread sectors. So one thing that I did notice is that the, the amount that we had allocated to treasuries did dip a little this quarter as we did find some opportunities in the corporate sector, in the fixed income space. So again, you know, we are actively always looking to provide, you know, yield where it makes sense. And you know, we took a little bit of advantage of that over the quarter. However, we still are pretty conservative given the market environment. If we, if we took, turn to the next page, page 14, this is the underlying market value performance of the underlying fixed income. And it shares the same story that was, was provided by Callon, that yes, fixed income, fixed income market value returns did go down over the quarter and year. But that being said, you know, it, due to multiple things in the market, you know, whether it's inflation, the Russian invasion of Ukraine, energy prices soaring. You know, we haven't seen, you know, energy, energy prices soar like this since the early 80s. You know, and the, the Fed is doing what they can to try to control inflation by raising interest rates. And you know, it's putting a little bit of pressure on the markets. You know, if we, we look at, you know, the performance, the relative performance of the underlying managers in the North Carolina Stable Value Fund, you know, we see that, you know, they were within a handful of basis points up or below the benchmark. So again, we don't have any concern with any of the, the performance of the managers. Yes, we're not happy that it was negative, but you know, we like to look at these things on a relative basis to the, to their underlying benchmarks. So really, you know, if I could give a general feel of what the, the performance, performance detractors were for the quarter, it was really overweighting the, the spread sectors as risks sold off. But as one of the things that our portfolios have is a high-quality bias, and that helped offset some of that, or that negative performance for the quarter. Also being shorter than the duration, shorter duration than the underlying benchmarks was also beneficial in some, in some of the managers. That being said, no manager significantly out or underperformed for the quarter, pretty flat quarter. We have no issues with the, with the, the managers that make up the, the plan here. That being said, are there any questions I could help answer?
Yes, I have one. This is Melinda. And my question is addressed to my treasurer. I'm looking at the report. Everything looks okay, but would it be possible to add one more line to the market value performance? Because each one of these are quoted, their performance is quoted before fees, and I'd also like to see performance quoted after the fee, which is the real money that we get.
That'll be, that'll happen in our next meeting.
Okay.
Did you get that message?
I did, I did.
Thank you.
I've got a question. This is Steve again. They're, given the extreme volatility in the interest rates, even on the short side, were there any unintended consequences or any surprises that you saw in the short-term market, the, with the stable value over the last four months?
Yeah, the, the big thing that I saw, or you know, Galliard saw as a firm, you know, in terms of market, of, of the stable value fund and ramifications of will they increase in interest rates? Again, as I, I tried to mention that we've seen this before, it's happened before, and stable value is well-positioned to handle it. I think the big number that kind of jumps on that page quarter to quarter is that market to book. So you know, some may think that that market to book is the end-all, be-all of the health of the stable value fund. But really, what, what plan sponsors need to take into consideration is the interest rate environment that is occurring. Now, if that, if that market book keeps flipping, you know, toward 90%, you know, that's when concerns arise. But really, where is that now? It's, it's totally expected, and the stable value fund is doing exactly what it should be. So overall, not, not a surprise to Galliard. But you know, for those who might not be so following stable value on a quarter-to-quarter basis, that looked like, you know, a material drop. But again, was expected given what the Fed has been doing with interest rates. Does that help answer your question?
Yes. Just, just curious. Thank you.
Okay.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you for your time. An apology is about the connection earlier.
Is there a problem? Chris, we are. Good morning, everyone. This is Chris Morris, the co-chief investment officer in the Investments Division. So I will be looking at the, the normal compliance reporting that, that I report to every quarter, as well as the 403B performance. So our investment compliance reporting, the usual items that I hit, there's really nothing material to report in terms of the divestment policies and prohibited holdings. The plan continued to not to hold any, any of the prohibited holdings. With regards to the executive order around the Chinese military companies, none of our managers were invested in any of those for the quarter. And then with regards to just the monitoring of the investment guidelines, staff monitors those individual guidelines for every investment manager that we have on a daily basis. And actually, Callon said most of that, so thanks to him. And reports any, any exceptions up. And there's really nothing material that came up during the quarter for that. I did want to use this time to give the board an update on the exposure to Russia for the plan. I know that's obviously been a topic, and there was communication that, that went out to the board, I think in early March regarding some of the exposure that, that we do have. So just to reiterate some of that, we do have exposure to Russia within both the International Equity Fund as well as the International Index Fund. The exposure was pretty minimal. as well as the International Index Fund. The exposure was pretty minimal in nature in being well less than, than 1% of, of both of those funds. Just to put some numbers on those, in the International Equity Fund, we held, at the end of February, we held six companies in Russia across three of the four funds that, that we have in the International Equity Fund. And those were marked at about 6.4 million at the end of February, which is about 0.3% of that fund. Now, those assets had already started to get marked down before the end of February. So just to be transparent there. In the International Index Fund, those assets were at a roughly half a percent, which that funds us $100 million, so it's about $350-ish thousand, I think we have exposure to that. Just in terms of what's gone on in the market since then, at the end of February, Russia, the Russian exchange suspended trading completely. That was suspended, they weren't open until towards the end of March, March 24th, they opened to local resident investors only. And that's essentially where we are today. So liquidity in Russia and these securities are extremely difficult to attain. The assets have been written down pretty significantly, in some cases all the way to zero. One of our managers, Mondrian, did have some success liquidating two of the positions that they held. So we, they held three of the six positions, they were able to liquidate two of those in the last couple of months. So we currently hold four companies of, you know, Russian domicile in the three underlying international equity funds. So that's kind of where we stand here. I mean, the managers are on top of this, they're, they're looking for liquidity, but given the fact that, you know, the market is largely still closed within Russia, it's, it's pretty difficult for them to, to trade out. And they're trying to balance kind of the fiduciary obligation to get the best value out of those securities with the, the risk of, of keeping those, right? So that's sort of where we stand on that. Certainly happy to answer any questions if the board has any.
Chris, in that regard, we have a desire to liquidate all assets, but our ability to do so is blocked by Russia?
Essentially. I mean, essentially, there's very little liquidity, right? I mean, Russia, the, the local market, we hold these securities a couple different ways. You can hold the local markets, or you can hold depository receipts. Most of what we hold is depository receipts, which is, gives us the ability to, to trade these securities on the non-local exchanges, right? So most of what we hold isn't depository receipts, but there's still not a lot of liquidity, because the liquidity from those depository receipts comes from the locals. And given that non-residents can't trade the local securities, it's very difficult. The ones we were able to get, however, were both depository receipts. One of them is a security that was traded on a UK exchange, so it wasn't even traded in Russia. So they were able to liquidate that one. And then the other one, they were able to, to, to get out of prior to everything locking up completely. But it's essentially, liquidity is essentially non-existent at this point in time. So they're looking for ways to get out, but it's, it's just very difficult to do so.
Some of you know, on the pension plan side, I asked the General Assembly to pass a resolution, which they did in the House unanimously, to send a, that resolution to our local delegation in Congress to adjust the JASTA, the last T A extends for Terrorism Act law, it's been on the books for 50 years, that would give us a tiny exit ramp to a very long runway to President Putin for his murderous activities. And it's basically what makes some adjustments to sovereign immunity laws that is, that we've been using for a long, long time regarding murderers like him. I was asked by the national press if this was a episodic event, like why you need to change the law, it's just, it just happened. And my sad remark to him and to you is, is that I don't think it's an episodic event. I don't think it's the last time we'll have to use this. So I've been meeting with the members of Congress from the high states, both senators. The person that I've had the most success with in my Raleigh career is Congresswoman Deborah Ross. And so I think she's coming over next week to, we worked out on a lot of things in the General Assembly over an eight-year period of time. And since she's a lawyer, and since she has a lot of international experience about things, business, all that kind of stuff. So we're, we're still looking for an opportunity to tag on to one of these leaf bills to possibly get this changed. Tiny exit ramp to a long runway. If that takes place, we've got some very high-powered attorneys and who are, have for decades been suing terrorists around the world successfully that we'll be engaging with. And if that happens, it typically will be on a contingency basis. We were on a call recently with 27 other state treasurers who are similarly interested in this. It's not Republican or Democrat issue. And if all that were to transpire, then I'll be coming back to the board with the results, obviously, and brief to you about what this means for us, how much of this money we could possibly recapture. I don't know what else to do. I mean, try to protect or recoup. It's happening. So.
For the compliance piece?
Yeah.
Yes. Unless anyone has any further questions?
Yes.
Yeah, go ahead.
This is Steve again. One last question on that. Is our current status, if the markets were to open, that we will liquidate immediately? Or is that pending and subject to further change?
So we haven't directed our managers to do so specifically, but all indications are they're trying to get out of, of all of those securities that they do have. Like I said, there's a few of them, and, you know, conversations with them, you know, the, the, the risk is just too high to even stay in those. So, but we have not directed them specifically to do so.
Okay.
All right. Christopher Investment.
403B?
Yeah.
All right. Thank you. I'll go through this quickly. So if you look at, at the next slide, slide three on the presentation, you can see the total assets of the 403B plan at the end of the first quarter, or was at about just over 31 million, down about 1.8 million from the previous quarter. The majority of that was due to market declines, as we've discussed a bunch this, today. 16 and a half million of those were in passive funds, and 14 and a half billion dollars were in active funds. We heard about what's gone on in the markets. Obviously, it was a tough quarter for both stock markets and bond markets, and that was clearly reflected in, in the returns of, of the managers, both passive and, and active options within the 403B plan. Just looking at high level on the active managers, it was, it was a tough quarter, both from a relative perspective against their benchmarks and, and an absolute basis. On a relative basis, five out of the six managers underperformed the benchmark, which, which is pretty unusual. The good news there on a relative basis, if you're looking at the longer term, five out of the six continue to outperform on, on the five year. So the, the longer term performance for these managers continues to be strong, even though it was a tough quarter. On an absolute basis, all the options lost money during the quarter with both bonds and, and stocks going down. The, the one exception to that was the, the principal diversified real asset fund, which gained almost 6% for the quarter, which, which is what you'd expect in, in this type of environment with inflation spiking pretty significantly. Those real assets really held up well and continued to do well. So good to see that, that option, as it's designed to do, is, is performing well when inflation spikes. I'll just hit on a couple of, of the managers that deviated significantly from their benchmark for the quarter. The first one is the T-Roe Price Blue Chip Growth Fund. They continue to underperform. This was one that's been underperforming for, for some time. They lost 12.4% for the quarter versus the benchmark, being down about 9%, so over 3% relative performance. They continue to, to, to struggle long-term as well. Stock selection continues to be a, a big challenge for, for them. And they're the one manager that, that has now underperformed all the time periods through five years that, that we measure. So, you know, we, I talked about this a little bit before, and, and, you know, if we weren't dissolving this 403B plan as a whole, you know, this would be one that would definitely be, be recommended to get on the, go on the watch list and keep an extremely close eye on. On the other side, the, the DFA manager, who is the one that, that is on the watch list, they continue to have a nice runabout performance. I believe I mentioned this last quarter as well. They outperformed in Q1, although their absolute performance was down close to 6%. The benchmark was down about 7.5%. So they outperformed by another 1.5% for the quarter. And they continue to have strong stock selection among a number of sectors, including kind of health and technology leading the way. And now they had a, a tough run of performance for, for a couple of years, which led them to be included on, on our watch list. But they've now outperformed through all the time periods that, that we measured, where the, the five year, this is the first time the five years outperformed in quite some time. They're five basis points ahead on the five year now. So good to see that manager turn around and have some pretty strong performance. And the only other one I'll mention that, that was pretty significant is Bailey Gifford. It was mentioned briefly with, with, with Callan on the 401K, 457 side, but they continue to, to struggle as well as there was this strong, you know, decrease in, in growth assets, and they're, they're a strong growth manager. So they've had a, a tough run of it after having outstanding performance in the 2020 time period. So, you know, we saw similar to what we were talking about with Sands earlier, similar type, type structure with a, a growth manager that, that is pretty concentrated, and they have some pretty wild swings in some of their performance. But the longer term performance there still remains pretty strong, and, and hopefully we'll see better performance out of, out of that portfolio coming up. So that's all I had to report unless anybody has any questions or would like me to dig into any of these other managers.
Any other questions? Hearing now, board members, you should know that Chris has been wearing several hats, but since Lauren left, we're leaving toward a process of, maybe one of those had flu at some point, but it wasn't today. So thank you for, you've got pretty good hair, wearing all the hats. My hair looks that good. I can wear that many hats. Yeah, I flames everything. Alan, we're not asking. Anyway, thank you very much. We have a public comment section. Patty, do we have anybody sign up for public comment? Given that, we'll deem the public comments section proposed. Board trustees, I'd like to go around the horn, starting on the phone, see if anybody has any comments they'd like to add. And in person. Thank you. Just another brief report. Alan Bonzie, some of you recognize that name from the Elders Retirement Board. I believe he is on his way after winning his primary this week to being a member of the General Assembly from Chapel Hill area. So we'll, eventually, he'll be leaving our board, and, but he's been a great, great member of the Elders Board. Of course, we'll deal with that also with Nels at some point in the future. But we have a lot of board members that have sheriff, Pender County, Carson Smith. It's, it never hurts to have people leave this board and go into the General Assembly. Because with the rotation of people in the General Assembly, I think there's a 38% inventory turn this year at the General Assembly. I think 75% of the General Assembly has less than five years' experience now. You know, having people, so to speak, who carry the water on technical bills, retirement bills, adjustments that we deem that we need to be fit to hand off to Sam Watts, it's really important, because these people have a lot of credibility and breadth of knowledge that they can help us with these. We, I think, Alan, I'm not sure he has a challenge during the general election, but he'll be a great member of the legislature. He's been a great member of the Elders Board. We look forward to handing some things off to him that we need for him to carry across the finish line, right? With that, I will adjourn our meeting as I started in honor of those students who were killed in the Texas shooting that I said publicly yesterday. It all sucketh, that's the word we're not supposed to use with the ETH on the end. A minister told me that I could use that, so I feel it's okay. As I said earlier, no holiday, no birthday, no Mother's or Father's Day will ever be the same for these families. Especially for those that victim, those victims that have brothers and sisters, nothing will ever be the same for them. I witnessed this firsthand, because we all know that women hold the world together, what it's like to cry inside while trying to make your remaining children laugh. And it's quite a tall feat. And so we'll, we'll adjourn our meeting in honor that God will wrap his grace and comfort around those, that community, especially those that were directly affected by those actions in that classroom, that, this community, and our entire fam, our entire country, excuse me. So our next board meeting will be August 25th, and this is Thursday at 9:00 AM. As always, we want to thank Patty and Zora, Tom and Jeff, and the entire team for everything they do to make this jump up on the table every time. And with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion second being made. Any further discussion? Hearing now in the clerk call role. Treasurer Falwell?
Aye.
Shabella Thomas?
Aye.
Lorraine Johnson? James Lobston? Steve Bane?
Aye.
Wynden Hibler?
Aye.
The eyes have it. Mr. Manager, thank you all very much. Say heavenly mercy to our
Thank you all.